Welcome, everybody, to the September 13th Board of Education Regular Business Meeting. Can everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may I have a motion to call the regular business meeting to order?
So moved.
So moved, Mike, second Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going to start with our liaison reports. I believe we have Audrey and Sydney from Schrader and Hannah and Lauren from Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. I am Lauren White, if anyone is new, and you are.
I'm Hannah Reeve, I'm the new liaison for Thomas.
And I'm Sydney Kena, and my sister's also a board liaison, but she has a tennis match night, so she couldn't make it unfortunately. Good evening, everyone, my name is Sydney Kena. I'm a senior at Webster-Schrader High School. At school, I'm the treasurer for the class of 2023 and the student council. I'm involved in Math League, Science Olympiad, Women in STEM, Spirit Club, Link Crew, National Honor Society, and French Honor Society. Outside of school, I work at Hagadorn's Market, and I'm a certified lifeguard. I would like to say that I'm thrilled to see what this forthcoming year brings, and I'm glad that we finally have a sense of normalcy this year. I'd like to thank all the faculty and staff for supporting us students as we have made the transition from summer to the school year. The first day of high school seemed to go well. Despite some apprehension, the freshmen were able to navigate through the school as Link Crew leaders were present all throughout the building. I had the pleasure of helping some freshmen find their classes as well. Clubs will also be starting this week, which is exciting. This will provide students with the opportunity to get involved with the school and meet new people. The student council will begin planning homecoming in the approaching weeks. Another event to look forward to is the Link Crew-sponsored event Kickball Under the Light for the large freshman class of around 360 students. It will be taking place this coming Thursday, September 15th, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM on the Schrader turf. Open house will also be taking place this coming Thursday from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. The senior sunrise took place this past Friday, September 9th, on the turf. It was a big turnout, as at least 100 seniors attended. In spite of the 6:00 AM wake-up, the bagels, muffins, and sunset were totally worth it. There are so many senior events yet to come. Seniors are also beginning to make college and after-high-school preparations as they attend college essay workshops and meet with their guidance counselors. More bathrooms around the school have opened up as renovation has been completed. Our library is still under construction, but will be finished within the next few weeks. Many students are excited to utilize the new library space. The first home football game of the season saw a huge turnout. The student section was spirited and zestful as they cheered for our team. We also won, which was a great start to the season. Our volleyball teams are undefeated so far. The boys' team beat the reigning Penfield champions, and the girls' team defeated Hilton. We wish both teams the best of luck this week with their upcoming matches. Girls' golf, tennis, swimming, field hockey, and boys' and girls' soccer are well underway. The marching band also competed this past Saturday, September 10th, at East Ridge High School, where they placed first in their class. Well done to the marching band on their first competition of the year. The Autumn Fan Fair, in which the marching band will host area bands, will take place on Saturday, October 8th, in the Schrader Stadium. The gates will open at 5:00 PM, and the show will begin at 6:00 PM, rain or shine. This concludes the report. Thank you for your time, and have a great night.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to say that it feels so great to finally be back in school and to have a routine again. I hope that you all had wonderful summers. During our first week of school, we had our incoming freshmen be showered with love as they walked into their new school home with beautifully decorated lockers done by our awesome Link Crew. We also had our first annual school cookout of the school year, and from what I saw, all of our school's faculty, staff, and students had a blast.
Our new group, Titan Service Scholars, will be going on our first international trip to the Dominican Republic this July. We're having our first car wash fundraiser this Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and if anyone's interested in coming to support us, we'll be located in the Bill Gray's parking lot. Also, we've been invited back to United Way Day of Caring, where last year we built urban gardens in the city of Rochester, and we've been invited back to rebed them and help out in their soup kitchen. Lastly, registration is now open for driver's ed students and can register through Webster Community's education database. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, so much. It's so great to have all of you back.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
And I need a motion to approve the agenda, because I skipped that part, so. Thank you. Moved by Linda, second Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
They do such a great job.
I know.
Amazing. Thank you, all liaisons. Okay, hello, everyone, how are you this evening?
Good.
Okay, welcome, Charlie, Carol, thank you for sitting next to each other. Linda. All right, WTA's commitment, I am the liaison, as most of you are aware of. I will report out on what our teachers' association are doing, but it is always filled with so many things that all of you are doing, our administrators, everyone, bus drivers, kitchen, everyone, Paris. We have an unwavering commitment to safety. You guys know it's important for me to mention that phrase first. TJ Milliman has done an amazing job making, having difficult discussions with everybody involved in making sure we stay as safe as possible, and that will never waver, because we know we all share that commitment. Over the summer, wow. WTA extends a deep sense of gratitude and appreciation. Our summer learning recovery program is stronger than ever, and I believe it was only in its second official year. It's such a neat way to have students who just fell below master those learning skills, not slide by and pass, but really master those skills without having a full regiment of summer school. So it helps families in that way, it helps kids with work schedules in that way, and it helps them understand the importance of, yes, you need these skills. And I've been fortunate enough to be part of it, and the kids are extremely, they're very gracious, and I wish we could have some of them talk as well one day. They worked hard, our staff works hard, and it is a strong program. We also know that it's taken on many different faces over the years, and summer school was alive and well, too, for students who needed a little more than a two- or three-week program. Over the summer, our local applied for and was awarded a Take a Look at Teaching. This is the first time I've ever heard of this grant. I think it's very unique, and we cannot wait. Board members will be involved, community will be involved. We are trying to recruit strong teachers who know they want to do it when they get to college, or adults who want to change their career path. So it'll be neat. It's a two-year program, looking forward to finding out more about it, what board members are going to be on it, MCC, people from the community, retired WTA members, as well as active WTA members. Our care program, Craig Johnville is in charge of it this year, and we cannot wait for Teachers Teach, Teachers is in person this year. So we will be bringing multiple food boxes and cartons and truckloads to various local pantries. He reaches out to different pantries, he will find out what they truly need and what we can focus on, because it's that balance of, you don't want to overload them at any one time a year, but at the same time, we want to make sure there is enough for everyone and to get the goods to them that they do need. This summer, professional growth had many faces, from attending conferences to facilitating conferences, from writing curriculum to making time to take what we learn in conferences and actively implement them in our lesson plans and assessments, from CPAI training and SEL learning. WTA has put in hundreds of hours this summer, and will continue to do some as we professionally grow in and outside of our school debt. Our PTSA with Linda Law is amazing. We are in contact with him weekly, and we love that partnership, and we'll continue it. EDI, I had the sheer pleasure today, it just happened to be, Dr. Robert Chowell came to our program where we were, and it was great to be able to meet him and the students. He tells the students to call him Dr. C. It was a warm welcome and a very productive plan. We welcome him as the director, I want to make sure I get this right, Director of Family Engagement and Inclusivity. I'm from California, we feel bad for the winter. Oh, I think we're going to have a mitten drive for him. And as I'm going to end it there, it's truly an honor to be the WTA liaison. I will be bringing you more details as the year goes on. I will be here every month. Please feel free to reach out if you have any questions about anything I report or any questions, period. And I wish you all health, happiness, and joy.
Thank you, Sydney. It's going to be a great year.
It is.
All right, we have our Webster Retired Educators Citizenship Award recognition.
All right, this is exciting, and I am so happy that we have so many people here to celebrate our students. So just a little bit to make sure we're all, everybody kind of understands and has a background, and those of you that are watching at home, every school year, the Webster Retired Educators Association, in conjunction with the Webster Central School District's elementary schools, presents one fifth grader at each building with the WREA Citizenship Award. Recipients model the attributes of scholarship, service, leadership, and sportsmanship in all areas of life. And on behalf of the WREA, Webster CSD is proud to announce this year's winners. And before we do, I also just want to say a huge shout-out to everybody that's here that made our opening day such a special event this year, families and students that were there. I really appreciated you being there. And we collectively heard all kinds of positive remarks about you guys being involved. So it's just fantastic, and I'm glad you're here tonight. So, but without further ado, I'm going to ask if Mr. Mark Schichtel, our principal from DeWitt Road Elementary School, could come up and recognize Leah. Yeah, have her come right up with you. Yep, perfect.
You're the guest of honor, you're in the middle. What a pleasure. And Board, thank you for this opportunity. I love DeWitt, we always get to go first. Leah is for DeWitt, and when people call the district, a lot of times they call DeWitt. So we always get to go first, and we're the best. I am proud to introduce Leah Stronach and her family, who accompanied her here with her today, as our DeWitt winner. She loves learning, she has a hopeful view of the world, and spreads positivity everywhere while daily embodying all aspects of cooperation, accountability, respect, and?
Excellence.
Excellence, you got it, you got it. In the classroom, she takes schoolwork seriously, consistently produces work of excellence, looks to improve, and welcomes feedback. Leah's level of excellence has been shown in independent study work while at home and/or away from school. She not only cares about personal success, but she also is so intent on the success of her peers by being encouraging and helpful in the school community. Leah is involved in many school activities, including band, safety patrol, and she was our PBS leader. She takes great pride in being involved and is dedicated to making her school and the world better. She has worked with teachers and the DeWitt administration? Me. To increase recycling and ensure that all students know the cafeteria's staff members' names. She also volunteers during recess time to help younger students and classes in the art room. Leah is also active in community and sports, participating in Girl Scouts, horseback riding, and dance. Let's congratulate Leah.
And Leah, we have something for you. Mr. Alt is bringing it over to you right now. Mrs. Lynn, would you do me a favor and take a picture? That'd be great, thanks. We'll get a picture of Leah and Mr. Alt and Mr. Schichtel. Yeah, if you would, yep. And Leah, you did go first, but you're going to have to come up at the end, because we're going to get one more picture at the very end of all seven of you two, just so you know, okay?
You get honored twice.
All right, and next we have Mrs. Laura Ballou from Clem North, and she's going to be recognizing Ivy. Ivy, come on up, Ivy.
Congratulations. We know what they say, first is, not in Leah's case, but second is the? Ivy Clem North are always second, which is great. I'm so excited to be sitting next to my friend Ivy Kabili. She excels both in the classroom and in the community. Students and staff describe her as dedicated, humorous, motivated, humble, and responsible. In school, Ivy is a very active participant in class. She is willing to learn new things, tries her hardest with every task put before her, and tackles challenges head-on. Her love of reading was put to good use during our fifth-grade Battle of the Books. That's a favorite at Clem North. When not in school, Ivy participates in many activities. She was recently cast as Cruella de Vil in a Drama Kids theater production of Storyland Idol, which I'm sure was fantastic, didn't see it, but I'm sure. She loves playing piano, guitar, and trumpet, and often plays alongside her grandparents in a small ensemble. Isn't that cool?
That is very cool.
I've heard her grandparents play before. She enjoys creative writing and performing her own short productions at home with her brother Leo. I haven't seen these, but I would like to. These performances often include dancing, comedy, and magic. She participates in Irish dancing, and this year, well, last school year, she marched in the St. Patrick's Day Parade with her dance troupe. She also participates in Ridge Runners and basketball at the Webster Parks and Recreation Center. She adores cats so much, so that her family actually calls her the Kitty Whisperer. How cool is that? Congratulations, Ivy. We're so proud of you at Clem North, and the district is so proud.
Congratulations, Ivy. Hold tight, we'll get a picture, and Mrs. Ladelph is coming over. All right, and next up, we have Mrs. Martha and our principal at Clem South. If you would please come forward and recognize Cesar, please, and bring him with you.
Want to sit here?
Sure.
Okay. All right, hello. Hi. The last time I was here, I talked out of turn, so hopefully you can keep me in line this time. This is Cesar, and he is Clem South's WREA Citizen Award winner, and I'm going to read what his teacher wrote about him last year. She says that he consistently demonstrates care and the essential skills. He enters the classroom with a smile on his face and is a self-motivated and dedicated learner who consistently produces high-quality work, taking pride in his learning. I have no doubt you're still doing that, correct?
Correct, yes.
Cesar leads by example, seeks to help others, listens, collaborates, and communicates with his classmates. He is reliable and responsible, always willing to help others and offer advice and encouragement. He shows compassion, but can be silly and fun, too. I've seen that in you. He is inclusive of others and an active participant in the school community, where he loves participating in orchestra. So something important to know is that he came into kindergarten not knowing English and has grown while navigating through learning a new language, being away from family, and acclimating to Webster. Now he's learning a new language in addition to the two he already speaks. Teachers describe Cesar as one of the most helpful, reliable, thoughtful, respectful, and kind children they have ever worked with. He has a contagious personality that is always positive and kind, and we really miss you at Clem South.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Get a picture there with Mrs. Bertonghini, he's coming over. Thank you, Cesar. Nice job. And next, we have Craig Bowden, Mr. Craig Bowenstein, our principal at Plain North, and he's going to be recognizing Maeve. Come on up, Maeve. Oh, he's bringing more up.
Oh, he's got a whole crew.
Mr. Schichtel probably challenged him back there.
Good evening. We are very proud to have the whole Fitzgerald family, including Maeve, who is now over at Spry doing amazing things. She is not only a role model student, but also goes above and beyond on a daily basis to be kind and helpful to her peers, staff, and teachers. She demonstrates daily all the essential skills and takes an active role in her learning. Maeve is dependable, reliable, courteous, and polite, respectful and respected, trustworthy and responsible, kind and considerate of all others. She is genuine when offering to help a friend in need or a teacher when she has had a little spare time. She demonstrates compassion in class by volunteering to help other students as well as praising others when they do a good job. My wonder, does that include your brother and sister? Other students look up to Maeve as a calm and fair leader. She is dedicated to her learning, participating in the lesson, and putting forth 100% effort on a daily basis. She is a positive role model to her peers. As a member of last year's Plank North fifth-grade class, she participated in orchestra, Battle of the Books, Math Olympiad, and also as a kindergarten helper. Maeve is willing to take on any extra challenges to further her learning in a variety of different areas. Outside of school, Maeve enjoys skiing with her family and taking golf lessons. Who's better, your mom or dad?
Probably, that was a probably, though.
It's a good thing, you might get ice cream tonight. Again, we are proud to recognize Ms. Maeve Fitzgerald.
Nice job. We'll get your picture taken with Dr. Rude. There we go. Next, we have Mrs. Jill Doyle from Plank Road South. She's our assistant principal there, and she's going to be recognizing Marnie.
I had to wear my taller shoes today, because when I saw Marnie, she sprouted right up. It is an honor to be here recognizing Marnie Mezzacetti. We miss her dearly at Plain South and know she's doing incredible things at Spry. Marnie is an exceptional student. She exemplifies what it means to be a good citizen in her school community. She is an admirable, patient, and caring student who loves to help others. Not only is she compassionate, thoughtful, and respectful to adults and peers, but she's also the kind of person who notices when others need assistance, helps without hesitation, and does so without the expectation of reward or acknowledgement. Teachers describe Marnie as an excellent student and positive role model, working collaboratively with classmates to accomplish group objectives. She is well-rounded, incredibly intelligent, mature, responsible, athletic, helpful, kind, and compassionate. She is also well-rounded, clever, creative, and truly a leader. She always looks for ways to be helpful. Marnie is a good friend to all. She demonstrates joy as she participates in lessons with a positive attitude. She's a caring student who shows respect to teachers and peers and is always willing to help with various tasks. She sets an excellent example for others to follow. We miss you, Marnie. We know you're doing great things at Spry. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Get a picture taken with Mrs. Diogarty. Thank you. All right, and next, we have Dr. Francine Leggett, who is our director of elementary, but our former Schlegel role principal, who is going to be honoring and recognizing Erin. And I just want to say, Mrs. Hessler would love to be here with Dr. Leggett tonight to honor Erin, but actually, Schlegel has their open house, and so she needed to be at open house. So I apologize to Erin's parents for not being able to be at open house, but thank you for being here tonight.
It might be PTSA.
Is it PTSA?
It's PTSA.
Oh, I was told, but is it open house or PTSA?
Curriculum, oh, excuse me, Mr. Lynn.
Yeah, it might be both, yeah.
It's good to see you. How's Willing? Yes, great, you look lovely. So Erin Bradford exemplifies outstanding behavior and character as a true role model. She consistently demonstrates the care attributes and essential skills. Erin is a self-motivated and dedicated learner who produces high-quality work and takes pride in her learning. She leads by example, seeks to help others, listens, collaborates, and communicates with classmates. She uses her knowledge to teach others while offering encouraging words and advice. Erin shows loyalty and compassion. She is calm, yet fun, and silly, and is inclusive of others. She shows kindness and respect to all, builds others up, and makes them feel good. Erin loves participating in Ridge Runners, being a library helper, and playing viola in orchestra. She helped design the Schlegel Crew t-shirts. There's quite a few, or a few girls that did that, and Erin was a key player in that design. And all the staff and students actually get to wear them each year, it's pretty cool. Outside of school, she takes dance lessons, plays piano, participates in summer soccer leagues, is a Girl Scout, and participates in service projects through her church. In her free time, she does have free time, there is free time. She enjoys writing and sewing, which others often benefit from. Her teachers describe her as a responsible, creative, a leader, hard-working, and a good friend to all. So congratulations, Erin, I'm very proud of you.
Great, Mrs. Barnum is coming over to get a picture with you?
Photo moment.
That's great, that's great. Nice job, Erin. And next up, we have Dr. Christine Nethable, our principal at State Road Elementary, and she is going to be recognizing Simon.
Good evening, everyone, how are you? I am thrilled to be here to introduce you to Simon Rude. Simon was State Road's honoree. He is repeatedly noted by his peers as being a good sport, inclusive of others, helpful and caring, always ready to help anyone who needs it, humble, persevering even when he doesn't excel at something, and cheerful. Teachers describe him as kind and considerate of others, a supportive and hard-working team member, consistently respectful, responsible, confident, and kind. In school, Simon participates in Battle of the Books, Bus Safety. He was a flag guardian, he played percussion, do you still play percussion? Uh huh, he's quite the musician. In band, he plays piano, was part of Ridge Runners. He's also in gymnastics outside of school. And Mrs. Prey was really happy to have him last year, because she says he's really good at math, and he gets math. You still like math? This is good. And he helps his peers by explaining in a way that makes them feel like they did the thinking along with him. Simon was a kindergarten helper, and he was also one of the school's first peer partners, because we had a new program. because we had a new program. Some new programs come to State Road last year, and he got to help out with those friends. Friends love playing football with Simon during recess, and teachers love talking to him. Congratulations, Simon.
Nice job, Simon. And Mrs. Richardson's coming over to get a picture? Congratulations, Simon. And if everybody else could come on up again, we're going to get one more picture. Mrs. Richardson and I will join you guys. And how about one more round of applause? And again, kudos, just before families, you leave, I just want to say thank you to all of you, too. You have some amazing kids, but we know where they come from, and it's all about our families and it's all about our community. So thank you for participating tonight, and thank you for raising such great kids.
Thank you.
A hand for the parents.
I know. I wondered. That's funny. And we move on to instructional reports.
All right, I think that's me again.
That's you again.
Okay. Yes, is it me or is it?
Well.
Campus news first. Campus news first, so, yep. If, actually, Mr. Bodensteiner and Mr. Powers, if you want to come up, I'll get started here, but I'll be introducing you in just a second. All right, I'm going to just start out by saying I am so happy to welcome everybody back to school. Take a look at a few of the photos taken on the first day last week. Those of us that are up here, Paul, do we have them up there?
Maybe?
No? That's all right. I can. Want me to come back to the photos? Oh, Brian's got them. As he's pulling up some pictures here, I'll just finish a little bit about that and let you know that, you know, I was able to visit all of our buildings throughout the first week, and I can tell you that our students and staff enthusiasm could be felt no matter where we went, where I went. One Webster is back together again, and the expressions in these photos, you can certainly tell that we're off to a great start. And so there they are. There's some photos right there. I don't know, do you have a few more slides there, too, Paul? You can see Lauren was up here talking tonight, and she was, you know, she was amazing on opening day, too, so. All right, I'll continue on here. We are also happy to welcome our staff for their opening meeting of the year on August 30th. And what made this day so special was the participation of the 30 Webster CSD students that we had as a part of that day. We were pleased to welcome our elementary school citizenship award winners that we just met. We also had members of our state championship marching band, outstanding high school vocalist, and a group of our Webster-Schrader Speech and Debate Team, which was so unique and so neat. It was a memorable morning that was highlighted by these talented students and an amazing staff choir, too. Our students are the reason that we do what we do, and we have, and to have them there made the morning even more meaningful. So just a little bit about our theme here, about our themes for the morning, I just thought I'd mention that. And so during that opening meeting, we shared themes with our staff that we'll focus on this year. The first of which is together. We talked about the importance of being together and the value of not only sharing our views with each other, but really listening to each other. The next theme was balance, and it's about striking that important balance between focusing on the academics, which are incredibly important, while also caring for our students' mental health and social, emotional, learning aspects of education. Both are integral to our educational programs, and both need to be emphasized. We also reminded each other that we must intentionally strive to achieve a work-life balance that works for each one of us, that will help our system. And lastly, we highlighted our staff as the true champions of education that they are. We know how important it is to share the inspirational stories of our staff members and our district. These stories highlighted the incredible things going on in public education, including right here in Webster. And we look forward to sharing many of those stories with our One Webster community this year. And speaking of positive stories, as part of our campus news, it's my honor to introduce two champions, Mr. Bodensteiner and Mr. Powers. Mr. Bodensteiner is our Principal at Plank North, and Mr. Powers is our Principal at Willink Middle School. And those of you that aren't familiar, one of the things that we do is we have campus news, and Mr. Bodensteiner will talk to us about some of the things happening around the campus at elementary, and Mr. Powers will be talking to us a few things that are happening at secondary. I'll turn it over to Mr. Bodensteiner.
Thank you, Brian. Great to be here, Board. So I have the privilege of being the first elementary rep in talking about. After 17 years of being in the classroom, I often wondered, what does senior leadership and administration do in July and August over the summer to get ready for a school year? Let me tell you, after being 10 years of administrator, it's two months, two and a half months worth of preparation, meeting after meeting and meeting. No disrespect to senior leadership, but I think I speak on behalf of anyone that gets involved in education. We didn't get into education to meet with adults. We got into education to work with our kids. And the best metaphor that I can really give is that opening day for us is like Christmas morning, except we don't have 10, 12 presents. We have 560 kids that are walking in the building, 92 staff members at Plank North, and it is the best of the best. I would argue with any profession, other than being a professional athlete that has opening day, like for baseball or something like that, no one else gets to experience what we get to do every September. And it was an amazing experience. To piggyback on what Ms. Kena, our Webster-Schrader rep, said, it was great to be back to quote-unquote "normal." Fantastic beginning of the school year. And the next portion I'd really like to talk about is gratitude, what I call the unsung heroes in a school district our size. And I apologize in advance if I left a stakeholder out, but the first group of people I would like to honor are the Building and Grounds Team. There has been a plethora, and I mean plethora, of construction that has happened on our campus, whether it be at the Transportation Department or each elementary school that has had basically their main office and their vestibular foyer area completely HDTV renovated with our last Capitol project. So I know the board is going to be coming over for some visits, and it'll be great for you guys to experience the new system and all the bells and whistles that go with that. Our custodial team. So our building was a little bit fortunate this year that our library, in addition to some of the other buildings, was not. But I know I speak on behalf of the six other principals, our custodian crews, and within the building have been flexible. Basically, they couldn't do much end of June, July, and had to wait until third, fourth week, our first work of September to actually get the classrooms and get them ready to go to open them up to our friends. Third group is our kitchen team. Lunch, again, is a stressful moment if you're a principal or assistant principal, to make sure that first day that everything goes swimmingly well and everyone's bullies are full with a nutritious meal. And thank you to Mark Belfour and all the cook managers throughout our district for making that a seamless transition. Fourth group is our bus drivers. How they do it, I really don't know. Mr. Konecki and I, the Assistant Principal at Plank North, had our care lessons with all of our students, and we flat-out told all of our students that I would argue with President Biden himself that a school bus driver has the hardest job, not in education, but the world. And we broke it down, all the things they have to watch for, to a five-year-old, the squirrel's important crossing the road, to a car in front of you, and on top of trying to manage 60 kids in the back of the bus. Our bus drivers have been amazing and flexible, under Director Joel Pastolka, to bob and weave and adjust routes during the first six or so days of the school year, so we thank them. And last but not least is our paraprofessionals. Our district is amazing. We had some special ed paraprofessional openings that were still open, 25-ish going into the last week prior to the school year, and many of our elementary buildings had our TAs and aides that our principals had conversations with about, would you mind starting in this building to help out these students for a week or two until we were able to hire? And without batting an eye, not one person showed any resistance and said, I will do it. It's about the kids. And they are a huge vertebrae, our backbone to our district, the work that our TAs and our aides do throughout our eleven buildings, and we are very gracious and gratitude for their flexibility. And I think we're doing well, and a lot of the people that were temporarily reassigned are now back quote-unquote in their home buildings. With that, I mentioned a little bit about construction. Many of our elementary buildings were able to have their meet-and-greet, where the families and kids were able to come in a couple days before school, drop off their supplies, see their teacher, most importantly, see who the other kids were that were assigned in their class that went swimmingly well. We had a curriculum night, many of our buildings, via Google Meet, so that way moms and dads could hear how field trips, homework policy, birthdays, and all that good stuff that goes into a school year that are important. And we did via, most of the buildings via Google Meet, because our attendance, we noticed even before COVID, had kind of dwindled. It's a tough time coming back into school, but even if you're a mom or a dad on the soccer field or lacrosse field, you could still attend a Google Meet, hearing the important information from your teacher via your telephone. However, it made it a little bit convenient, and families, not alone babysitting, could be a pickle, too. Many of our buildings had their opening day assemblies. We had a lot of training this summer with something called Community Circles. Almost all of our elementary buildings have a program called Responsive Classroom, and in a nutshell, it's about developing good relationships, both with our students first and foremost, and with our staff. So many buildings had Community Circle, or Circles plural, to help welcome on our Superintendent's Conference Day, our faculty meeting, and then also, it was great seeing our staff then lead those conversations with the students first thing in the morning when they got off the bus. Last thing I'd like to talk about is Encore. So Encore is something new for all seven elementary buildings that began this year. Our schedule is now connected with Encore, so every grade level, every six days, has Encore. And Encore was implemented to help meet the New York State Digital Literacy Curriculum. Mrs. Lane, I'll defer to you, but it's within a couple years that every, the expectation that this curriculum, thank you, even sooner. So Webster, being Webster, is ahead of the curve, and every building has an Encore teacher, and the kids, like I mentioned, will go down every six days and have a 40, 45-minute lesson, whether it be coding, digital literacy, keyboarding, all those skills that we think we need as adults now, but really, we're preparing kids for jobs that we don't even know exist in 12, 13 years, and probably, they'll be making fun of us, much like we're making fun of when we took keyboarding back in high school, back in the day. So on that note, enough of me talking. So here are some images throughout our buildings from the opening week festivities. And again, the common denominator that you see, whether it be a child or an adult, is the smiles from ear to ear, and that is what it's all about. Now, I've rambled on, Mr. Powers is probably going to heck with me because I went over my five-minute threshold. My wife tells me she doesn't want to hear me talk for more than five minutes. So on that note, you're going to hear from our students, kindergarten through 5th grade and staff, of what the high point was of the first week of school.
Hi, my name is Kate, and my favorite thing is bus.
My name is Masma, and I like learning and math.
Hi, my name is Lilian. My favorite part of this week was meeting all the teachers and kids.
Hi, my name is Alex, and my favorite thing about coming back to school is meeting new people.
My name is Scarlett, and my favorite part of school is playing.
Hi, my name is Joey, and my favorite thing about 2nd grade was meeting my teacher.
The best part about opening back up this week is being with these kiddos again. They are ready for school this year, and we are full steam ahead.
Hi, my name is Dylan, and my favorite part of coming back to school is seeing all my friends I didn't see over the summer.
Hi, my name is Matanzi, and my favorite part is my teacher, Mrs. H, because she's so nice.
Hi, my name is James. I beat, my favorite part about 3rd grade is being the 5th grader in a basketball tournament. It was five 3rd graders against five 5th graders. We beat them.
Hi, my name is Raylan, and my favorite part of school is make, is all the things that I have learned in Mrs. Barnard's class.
My favorite moment this week, coming back to school, was probably getting to meet my awesome teacher, Ms. Butler.
My name is Zeus. I like doing art because I like making really cool things to make.
Definitely meeting all these adorable little friends that want to come in and want to learn with smiles on their faces, and we're going to keep smiling all year long.
My name is Ryan, and my favorite part about being back at school is math and science because I want to learn harder math and get better at science.
Hi, my name is Genevieve, and what I like about 4th grade is math.
Hi, my name is Ali, and my favorite part of 3rd grade so far is seeing all my friends.
Hi, my name is Kaia. My favorite moment of coming back to school was Encore class. It was exciting.
Math and meeting friends and doing some things finally.
My name is Kate, and my favorite part of coming back to school is meeting all my teachers.
It's wonderful to see all the kids filling our buildings again. It's my favorite part.
My name is Jacob, and my favorite part about 4th grade is Encore because I like learning about computers.
Hi, my name is Maya. My favorite part about school being back this week is going outside and playing recess because I get to see my friends and I get to play tag.
Hi, my name is Tyler, and my favorite part of being back to school was getting my safety belt because I felt that I liked helping people.
Hello, my name is Annalise, and my favorite part about 3rd grade is that we're going to get Chromebooks.
My favorite part of being back to school is the smiles, the hugs, and getting to be silly.
Hi, my name is Lennon. My favorite thing about 3rd grade is to make new friends and learn new stuff.
My name is Leo. My favorite moment about going back to school is recess.
My name is Amelia, and I like coloring.
Hi, my name is Cameron, and my favorite part about 2nd grade is gym because I like to work out and exercise.
Hi, I'm Diogarty, and my favorite thing about the first week of school was Encore and that we played games in it.
Our favorite part of the first week of school is...
Watching our students go from being anxious to being excited.
And on that note, I'd like to thank Mr. Paul Conley for taking an idea from this guy and actually turning out to look something like professional. So thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Good evening, everyone. Brian Powers, Principal at Willink Middle School, and I'd like to thank Paul, maybe next time put Craig second because he's a tough act to follow. And, no, I knew Craig, my esteemed colleague, would be a tough act to follow, but following our students and staff is even harder, but that was wonderful. And I want to echo what our secondary liaison shared tonight, in that our opening week and a half now has just been full of joy, full of excitement, full of a sense of normalcy that we are so excited for. So thank you to the Board for having us here tonight, and thank you to the Board and to our senior leadership for bringing, as Craig mentioned, bringing us together last year and over the summer to be able to hear from all facets of our system, of our community, in that sense of together, to really gain an appreciation and an understanding of all the things that go into making this an incredible district for our students, and I think we are realizing that in these opening days. And again, as Craig mentioned, our facilities continue to have security and facility upgrades. A lot of times, we come back from the summer, and something I hear myself saying a lot is the building's too quiet during the summer. It's great to have some noise back, and in this summer, at least at Willink, it was not quiet. There was a lot of, there was a lot of noise taking place, and we are excited for that to continue and to finish up and all of those... And we are excited for that to continue and to finish up and all those facilities we'll bring to our students and staff. So I will share a few pictures. Starting with Superintendent Nina, I found a few moments to have a quick cup of coffee at Willink Middle School this year. So we were happy to see him on our opening days and snap a quick picture. Of course, our students are always very happy to see him. Our middle school, so it's both Spry and Willink, we wanted to highlight what really kicked us off just before school started, which was our web days, which are our orientation days, led by our eighth grade students welcoming our sixth graders to the building. And if you've had a sixth grade child come into middle school, especially if they're the first in the family, you know that can be, at times, an intimidating experience. It's a much bigger building, a lot of changes. And what we tell parents over and over again, and students, and I think is, remains true, is that after Web Day, a lot of those feelings have changed because they've met students, they've seen the hallways, they've hopefully gotten into their lockers, which is often something that is number one in the list of concerns. And so for both Spry and for Willink, the pictures are just a snapshot and don't do it justice. But we loved kicking off the school year with our web days in full force. And love that we welcome our students with, certainly with staff members, but also with our eighth grade students who make that transition that much easier. Our high schools were full of excitement as well. As our liaisons mentioned, I know our PTSA was out decorating probably all of our buildings with welcoming messages, which we certainly appreciate. And Thomas got kicked off with their hot dog cook-off day and had to show Mr. Weed over there having some fun. And again, as our Schrader liaison mentioned, the Senior Sunrise Breakfast. And again, the pictures are just a snapshot of how cool an experience that is for our seniors getting started for their, you know, their big year here in our high schools. And I know all of our OWL programs had great starts to their opening days. And I wanted to share specifically, OWL Middle School was our newest OWL program, which kicked off last year and is now fully staffed and fully full of students in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And just, we are very lucky and very excited to work with our students and staff in the OWL program at Willink Middle School. And our goal program as well, housed at Schrader High School, shared some pictures of the chill-out zone and some opening day and opening week activities, team building, and really getting the school year started off in style. So again, just in summary, and just to echo what's been shared already tonight, the feeling of rounding a corner and really getting back to all of the things that make teaching and learning and educating in Webster wonderful have been in full effect these last few weeks. And we thank everybody that makes this happen. So again, thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate being able to share.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. And thank you, Mr. Bodensteiner-Bolt. And just a little bit, I know, that was a good, good time. As far as the Senior Sunrise goes, actually, it's a few other school districts did do this as well this year. But the concept, I guess, is that they see the sunrise on the first or second day of school. And then, when they graduate, and we know this definitely happens here in Webster, is we get to during the ceremony, the graduation ceremony, we watch the sunset. So that's kind of a neat opening and closing to their senior year, if you will. All right, so I'll just wrap this up with one other piece. And it's really a thank you to our Webster Chamber of Commerce. So President and CEO Barry Howard asked our district to host the chamber's monthly breakfast meeting in August. And we were happy to do so. And it was an invaluable opportunity for us to share information about the district and to connect with so many community business leaders. And I look forward to continuing those connections and conversations with local business leaders throughout the year. And also want to thank Mrs. Land, Mr. Blask, and Mr. Montemaro for helping present that day. So it was such a great, great day. And that ends my report. And thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our professional development report. And we have Aaron Land and Greg Alquist.
And Sarah Pepper.
Thank you.
And a friend, Sarah Mitchell.
And our friend Sarah. Sarah Mitchell, I'm sorry, Sarah. Sarah Mitchell. Thank you so much for having us tonight. We are excited to give you a snapshot into the world of professional learning. So like I said, I brought Sarah Mitchell along with me today. Sarah is a UPK teacher at Schlegel Road. And Greg Alquist, who wears several hats for our district, social studies teacher at Thomas, but also teacher in special assignments, leading our professional learning work in the district, and also our induction program, which you're going to hear more about today. So for us, we have Always Learning as sort of the heart of our vision, one of the three components. And we've really been on a journey the last few years figuring out what Always Learning should mean. And that has changed drastically over the last three years for a number of reasons. But we're excited to embrace this part of our vision. And it's not just about teachers. So oftentimes, you'll hear professional development related directly to the teaching staff, but it's about all of our staff. It's about board workshops. It's about anybody who wants to learn and grow. And we embrace them as part of this vision as well. Hopefully, this vision and our Always Learning card there looks familiar to you. We, this is not something that just sits idle. It's definitely something that anchors our thinking and our discussion as we talk about professional development. Our format and content for sure shift over time depending on what people need, what's the feedback that we're getting from our staff, where do we need to go? Are there new standards coming out? Is state ed suggesting this might be a direction we have to go? Or state ed saying this is where we're going to go? All of those things impact the work that we do and the planning that we undertake. We're noticing already that this year, people are ready to travel further, both literally and figuratively. So literally, people are willing to travel outside of Rochester to access some professional development. And we really haven't been to many conferences or opportunities out of town the last couple of years. But figuratively, people are showing that they have some brain space for more than survival mode, which we've been in the last couple of years. So we are excited to push our practice and grow together as a system. And we really want to capitalize on that feeling. I know Greg and I have talked about, man, doesn't this feel good? We've really got to get some plans in place. So planning has already started happening for this year, as well as even next summer, believe it or not. Greg's going to talk in a little bit about some new ideas around how we're going to use professional learning and an idea called the learning track. And so we're trying to offer people multiple ways to grow. So you're going to hear from Greg in a little bit about that. Tonight, you're going to hear about the professional learning, but also about our induction program. So two components of what we do here to grow. Up on the screen, you'll see the 2122 school year professional learning opportunities. And I say that the 224 number that's up there are sort of the things that were in the catalog. But really, we offer professional development and professional learning, a lot of times that they don't even appear in the catalog. So you think about a committee meeting, you think about a faculty meeting, a curriculum meeting, a department meeting. So there are lots of ways that we offer professional development. But the standalone opportunities in our catalog, you can see 224 different opportunities. Some were virtual, some were synchronous, some were asynchronous. But we had a total of 2,319 participants work through those 224 opportunities. We were very strategic in 2122 because of what I talked about before. We didn't necessarily have the brain space to do everything that we've done in the past. And so we really are thinking about our priorities moving forward and how they may be different. Conference, for instance, lines may go up. We may send people further away, like I talked about. But 2,300 participants is a pretty big number. Pretty proud of that number. The next slide also talks about the summer. So this summer, we offered 149 different learning opportunities, again, in multiple formats, synchronous, blended. We had 1,492 participants. So if you think about the number of folks that work in Webster, that's a pretty high percentage of people who participated. That includes curriculum work. It includes standalone learning about a technology. It includes learning about a teaching method or delivery in the classroom. You heard already from our WTA rep who talked about how professional learning was such a part of their organization. And so we are excited that we had this number of people participate this summer.
And it also should be pointed out, that number, for 149 different learning opportunities, some of those learning opportunities were multiple sessions, too, so spread out over the summer. And I can point to one that I led, where we had, we did some learning together in a day. And then there was learning that happened outside, where teams of teachers actually collaborated and targeted an application of what was learned in the summer. And now they're going to apply it in the summer. And another way to kind of illustrate all of this change, and actually, the energy, I think, that we feel in the system right now, is that I find myself doing something that I've only done two other times. And that is, this week, I'm in a fifth grade classroom. Understand, I am a high school teacher. But this week, from after I'm done teaching my classes at Thomas, I jump in my car and head over to an elementary building. And I am there teaching for an hour all five days this week because one of the teams that did that professional learning, one of their team members wasn't able to be there. And so they wanted a little bit of extra support. And so we kind of creatively brainstormed some way. And I am co-teaching in that fifth grade classroom. And I think that is indicative on multiple levels of where we're at, that this wouldn't have been even an option on the table the last two years. But there is, there's new enthusiasm and new ideas and new ways of thinking that we do want to capitalize this year for professional learning. And two other ways to illustrate that, you know, we've been on pause with our Teachers Teach Teachers kind of professional learning on the superintendent's conference days. And that is going to be back. And we are believing better than ever. And we already have over sixty sessions that have been lined up for our staff to be able to engage in. And it also is just worth, as a footnote, it's also about the community and the relationships that happen that day when everybody in the system is all together and learning and going after something collectively and collaboratively. So we're excited about that. And Aaron mentioned, too, that we're just dreaming a little bit differently. So one of the things that we're thinking about this year is creating like a learning track. I'm even thinking about like an Always Learning track. And what we would do is set up a series of learning. Some of it would be in-person, but then some of it would be done asynchronously. And then some of it would be a reflection piece. And then ultimately, with the idea of turnkeying it to their colleagues. So we want to be really intentional about some of that and then allow depth as well as breadth of learning to be able to capitalize. So again, I think those are just a couple of illustrations of ways that it feels like this is a different start than we've had in the past, that I'm really excited about. The second thing I wanted to mention is about our induction program. And you are all familiar with it. And many of you were able to make it out to the first day with our orientation. But just a big picture look on our induction program, this is the fifth year that we've had it. And so there was actually a moment on opening day when tenure was read in the building where, at Thomas, I was like, those were the first people through our induction program. And there was just a moment of gratitude for those teachers and staff that had kind of been through and had a different level of support than I did, or those of us that have been in the system for over twenty years. And so we had, as you will remember, this room was completely filled. We had just a full house. And this number, Aaron and I were talking, that number of ninety-plus, and I don't even know where that number, and it's not done yet, right? But that number is the highest number since we opened Willink, meaning a second high school and a second middle school. So that also speaks to the lift. But there is new energy. And I teach in, at Thomas, with a new teacher, brand-new teacher right out of college. And there is an energy and excitement. And the way that he's building relationships in that classroom is just refreshing for me, to be able to see that injected into the system. So this is a big part of our induction program. But I want to highlight one other thing for us. And because our induction program is two years, this is another piece that we are kind of refocusing on. And it is a coaching cycle that we want our mentors and our new staff to be able to go in. And what they're going to do is they're going to, they're going to identify a part of their craft or part of their practice that they'd like to improve or target. And they're going to set a goal around it. They're going to learn and engage in learning, in all kinds of access learning, whether it's inside the system, whether it's outside the system, whether it's through a book, whether it's through observation of colleagues. But then, the next phase is actually where there's peer observation, where the new staff member will observe the mentor, and the mentor will observe the new staff. And not with the purpose of kind of any kind of report, but as a way of giving honest feedback and of sharpening each other. And then there's a process of reflection. And we all know that learning is not linear. So it doesn't go in this nice little progression, as nice as that slide is. We know that you're going to get to a certain point, and we might have to refocus that goal. Or maybe we may have to take another pass at it. Or maybe we need to set a different one. I mean, we just want to honor that practice, but we also want to empower mentors to be able to do that. And so just as one other quick look at our first overview of our first year, we had a combination of asynchronous learning that we are pushing out and making available because we are still hiring staff. So we recognize that making some of that asynchronously available to our staff is a really helpful way to equip and empower them. But then there was also pieces that we worked on individually and in person. So we went after standards-based learning and the Culture Responsive Sustaining Framework were incorporated into our orientation and will be throughout the year. But rather than have me continue to talk about it, just wanted to turn this over to Sarah, who has been through, has been a mentor one year, and just to kind of give us a few reflections of her experience as a mentor.
Yeah, I'm Sarah Mitchell. I am a Webster graduate and have been teaching in the district for twenty-three years. This year is my third year at UPK, Universal Pre-K. Eighteen students. Last year was our first year going full day, three and four-year-olds, so three years on the earth, like not very long. And it was also our first year post-COVID. So a lot of these children hadn't been socialized much outside of their homes. And it was a super challenging year. And I was lucky enough to have another section open next door to me. So I was asked by my previous administrator if I would be willing to mentor. And of course, I said yes. And so I thought, sure, I can set some goals with her or take her on a tour. I thought maybe that would be it. But it was much, much more than that. But it was perfect because really, we both needed it. We did a lot of problem solving together. We naturally peer observations. We have an adjoining room with a door so we could peek in at each other. We planned together, then took it through this summer and really sat down together and figured out, how can we reach the needs of the kids coming to us now, the kids in front of us, rather than trying to, you know, put them in a pre-planned box? Because that does not work. And so we worked hard and we're continuing to do so. And this year came in and are still starting to look at this cycle and actually plan to do those meetings. And we're looking forward to doing a book study called Onward that talks about resilience in teachers. And really, from benefiting from our symbiotic relationship that's happened because we're both learning from each other.
When I asked Sarah, and we had a conversation about tonight, and her experience in our induction program, the first thing that she talked about was what she took from the mentoring relationship, which is, that's who she is, that she's thinking about the ways that she's received rather than what she's given. But it really is a reciprocal relationship that, at its best, when it functions and it works at its best, it is. And it's also worth pointing out, too, that many of our staff are actually experienced. I think we found that the average age of our new hires of those ninety-plus staff was 7.7 years of experience. years of experience. So that coaching cycle is helpful because when you're coming in with expertise, then that coaching cycle that can be crafted collaboratively or a good mentoring relationship that just moves actually benefits both of them and benefits our entire system. And so the last thing I just wanted to point out is our, just to highlight that year two, and Sarah gave a very nice preview. One of the centerpieces of our year two mentoring program is a book study that the mentor and mentee kind of do together. And then we also, all of the mentors work with either Katie Carter, who is kind of a partner in crime for me in this work, or will work with me and we kind of take them and we do those actually asynchronously. So that book study becomes a centerpiece and then also those coaching cycles become part of that second year where we want to see and release that responsibility to our new staff and empower them to do the work. And so I think this is the, this is the ground that we want to take, that we have new ideas and new ways of thinking and we're excited about this upcoming school year.
We'd love to know if you have any questions for us.
So thank you so much for all the information. That was wonderful to hear, especially because it's so important for continuous learning. And like you said, really the last year was survival. There's still maybe some teachers who are still thinking they're in survival right now, maybe on the way out is what we hope for. So that was, that was really good to hear. So it sounds like, so you mentioned, I think it was last year, there was 2,300 participants. Is that more, is this the first year you've tracked it or are there typically more or less, or is it right along?
Great question. So.
Cue Erin Land with statistics.
So 21, 22, we had the 23, 19. And in 2021, we had 2,074.
Okay.
So a few hundred more.
That's shocking in a tough year, right?
I think people needed support. And the, the nice thing about the way that it works in Webster is that we listen to what people need and then design what they need. So it may not have looked normal last year in what we offered to teachers, but I think we offered them support where they needed it.
That's great. And so this is, and it's, so it's comprised of lessons that you guys teach where you have other staff teaching and then also online courses that people can take.
All of the above.
Okay, that's great. And so do you survey the, do you survey the staff each year to find out where they're, where they're looking for that support?
So our information comes in multiple ways. So Greg does work with the policy board, which has representatives from every building and also administrators that take part in those discussions. We incorporate it as part of the strategic survey as well. But then I think that throughout the year, we also ask for feedback. So if it's, I'm thinking about your PD this summer, Greg sought feedback after to say, what really worked for you, what didn't work for you? And that's how we found out there was a team member who wanted to participate and couldn't. And so we continued on.
Yeah.
I think the, the policy board piece is really important to our system. So there is, there's at least one representative from every building and we charged them both in the beginning and at the end especially, surveyed what their needs were, but also how they wanted to learn. And we also put some options in front of them of new ideas and how they wanted professional learning delivered and what was the most optimal, and then also when. Because those things all matter. Because you can offer the best professional learning, but if it's not when somebody's available, then it's useless. So we, so what we did is we charged our policy board reps to go and to either have, and many of them kind of did it different ways. Most of them actually sent out a formal survey and gathered that data. And then they also, we also encouraged them to have strategic conversations kind of with focus groups to be able to get kind of hear where people were at too, which I think is really important. So data tells one story, but the conversations and the anecdotal evidence also can sometimes confirm, but also push in a slightly different direction. So we take that, that input very seriously and then that directs not only our budget, but then also the professional learning that we're going to offer throughout this year. So the TTT option, just as a way of illustrating it, the reason that we pushed hard to be able to reoffer that is because it scored very high on the survey, that people wanted that back. So we try to respond as much as we can.
That all sounds wonderful. And Sarah, also great job. Sometimes it's difficult. If you've been doing something 23 years, you know, you know, you know what you're doing. And so when you have someone new come in, you know, it can, you really have to open yourself up to be able to, willing to accept input from someone, you know, from different. So I think that's great that you had such, that you really nourished, that that relationship was so that you guys were sharing back and forth. That is fantastic because that's really what we want. We want people that haven't looked, that's really those diverse ideas and different backgrounds. And so really bravo, that's beautiful. I think that's great. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for all you did.
It's very much appreciated. My one question is, you know, you hear on the news that students across the country have lost some time because of COVID for the last couple of years. So of the 149 professional development opportunities this summer, were some of those geared towards how we close the gap with our students and help them post-COVID?
Yes, so I'll take a stab and you can jump in. So I think on the one hand, absolutely, that we are targeting some instructional practice and trying to fill those gaps that have been identified. There's no doubt that I can think of some technical offerings that are kind of targeted in that line. But I think the larger answer to the question continues that to build on that yes, rather than just kind of citing maybe a couple of offerings. I think the offerings that we presented around social emotional learning and culture responsive teaching practices kind of open, it created greater sensitivity to our students. And I think it was, it's also about raising awareness of where students are at and who they are and how we're going to build relationships with them that will, that will allow them to be real partners on that learning journey. So I think it would be, it would be easy to answer it with just the technical and instructional angle, but I think it is the relational building in the ways that we connect with students, that holistic look that is part of the way that we've designed professional learning to kind of ultimately move learning across the system.
I would add that in the curriculum work that we did, a lot of the feedback I got was around assessment work and not just post-assessment, but pre-assessment, which has become more and more important as we've identified these gaps that kids may have. And so in, there are some, some feedback that I got from the summer was we spent way more time trying to identify ways we could support kids to close the gap than we ever have before. So I think that that's on teachers' minds and part of the work that they did this summer.
And the only other thing I'll mention too, when attached to every curriculum work that happened over the summer, we hardwired an expectation that they would create some kind of a report or kind of sharing of that work because, and this is what, this is what happens, I'll illustrate it in my discipline, in my context. In social studies, we might have our team do some work around global nine and 10, and we did. But inevitably, somebody's not able to be there. And so the team goes forward and then there's other people that don't, are not able to take advantage of that learning. And so by building kind of almost a report and then sharing it at our opening department meeting about what the work was done over the summer, we kind of built a mechanism to be able to share to, again, not just gaps that students have, but then also recognizing that there are gaps that even our staff has, that some may take ground and then some were not able to park. So how are we going to bridge that gap, all ultimately in service of student learning?
I have a question. All of this, if I was in the audience as a parent, not a teacher, I would have a question about something specific. You know, all like synchronous and asynchronous. What is it? You know, I'm just trying to look at it from another point of view. Something specific.
Great. Let me, let me illustrate it with the, the learning that I offered, that I mentioned about a fifth grade classroom. So the first part of the learning happened synchronously because, and that simply means it's happening at the same time with everyone. That could, synchronous learning could happen across a screen, but it could happen in person. And I think what we learned over the last three years is that there is incredible power in face-to-face learning. There's just some things that happen. And so we gathered in this room and this space and it was, it was synchronous learning and it was in person. And the conversations were just really rich. So we looked at the culture responsive sustaining framework. So we grounded our work in some standards. And then we looked at some instructional practices we kind of guided through and then we reflected on those activities. How did they reflect and how did they, how were they anchored, those practices in what we had started the day by looking at the framework? So then the, the second part was asynchronous and it, in that part of the learning, took place on the, on the time of the teams. They set their own work. So some of the teams actually set a time where they were going to get together synchronously and then they divvied up the work and divided it. And they were able to do that on their own time asynchronously, apart from one another. And then what we did is we brought everybody back for one hour and we did this over Google Meet. So we did it synchronously, but we did it across a screen. And each team reported on what they learned and how they had applied that learning from the first time when we were all together and kind of their journey after that, which was asynchronous in a synchronous format, but across a screen. And that was just to be able to honor people's time. And it also, we knew that that was also a little bit challenging to get everybody there for that second day. But by doing it asynchronously and over, over a Google Meet, we were able to have everybody there, even if some people were in California and having a much better time than I was. Does that help Carol? I think that does. It's also worth pointing out, by the way, that that new teacher is in your old classroom, so.
Greg, Sarah, Erin, thank you so much. That was great.
Yeah, it was wonderful. Nice job.
With that, kind of a motion to approve the 22, 23 professional development report. Shanna, so moved. Second Linda, all in favor?
Aye.
Bye. Thank you. And we're onto the board business, I believe. Brian, right? Tax cert and small claims update?
Yes. So this is for information only. I like to do this every fall, once the tax certs get filed and the small claims start rolling in, just as a informational kind of what you'll see throughout the year. So I think we've actually settled a few cases over the last couple of months. So you could just get an idea of kind of, this is the jump off for that, what we see every year. And just to point out, this year we saw a few more tax certuraries out of Penfield, not uncommon because they did a reassessment. But everything I have listed for you two is ongoing. So some of these go back to the 2014, 15 tax year. This isn't just the 22, 23 challenge. These could be this year plus several years prior to it as well, just as a point of reference. So it is every year, the court, you go through a process. So depending on how interested the parties are to come to settlement terms or to keep it going, they're usually, you know, a good seven, eight years is probably the longest you'll see one keep going. Generally, three to four is on average what you'll see before you get moving because like there is a little bit of a backlog there with these cases. Not too many judges to oversee these as well. It's a very specific type of case. It requires very specific, if you do go to court, specific assessments and independent reviewers. So they do take some time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Brian, is there an average for how long, is there like an average for how long these are out there sometimes before they're?
I'd say three to four years, which would be the best average.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So the tax certuraries, we have a reserve to help minimize that budgetary impact. You know, we always like to keep that with a healthy balance because you never know what's coming down the pipeline. We do have a very large corporation in town with some history there. So we like to keep that, that balance up there in case anything should pop up. So you see there's a smattering of commercial properties from all sorts of business models that we get these challenges from. And then the second part is I always like, because this is the one, the nuts and bolts that really box down the business office for a couple of months, is sorting through what we call small claims adjustment reviews. And those go before an administrative judge who are, who's trained through the county office of real property. And it's just an assessment challenge on houses. So this year we have a huge increase, more than we've ever seen from Penfield because they did a reavail.
Right.
And so the timing of that is always interesting because you have to put the challenge in before, it's months before we even set our tax rates. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out in the reviews from the administrative judges when they make their decisions. So usually we start getting those mid-September into, well, into October to issue refunds or do nothing at all if nothing was decided. So several more cases to go through. And I gave you the worst case of how much is being challenged, but we always average around $10,000 and we have a budget line to pay those out of.
Okay, thank you. And then capital project change order, correct?
Yep. So we have a change order associated with the bus garage. And all change orders that are over $35,000 need board approval before we send to SED. And this one is, as everybody's well aware of, our bus garage facility was in a protected wetland area and it took us, I would say, two and a half years to get final approval for construction. And they threw us a curve ball and told us it was no longer, you know, about halfway through the approval process, the DEC said, oh, well, you're not wetlands anymore. So we had done some testing to see how far down for bedrock to be able to, you know, do the asphalt and the subsequent materials to support buses. And a couple of things that happened were over the years, our parking lot expanded, whether through, you know, removing snow that might have pushed a few extra 100 feet into what was technically the wetland zone. And so then we put some crushed stone over. So it kind of got lost of where exactly the delineation was. So we didn't test every single area because we had crushed stone on it and the history. So in the bid, there's a base amount for removing the unsuitable soils, putting down new materials to be able to build up the new parking lot. So we, you know, scanned and a couple of the areas, we needed to haul out additional truckloads and put in new materials that were above and beyond what we initially set aside for this project. So that's what we're doing with the change order, is allowing the contractor to go through and perform that work and moving forward with that.
Questions?
So it looks like campus construction, they reviewed that change order. They, they agreed that.
Yep, everybody reviews that change order.
Okay, and it looks, the price looks appropriate for the services.
Correct, yep.
All good? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the capital project change order, ISO 34, in the amount of $1,000, $135,293 for the bus garage? Charlie, so moved, second Carol, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That approved, seven, nothing. And Brian, thank you for shutting off that awful noise coming from downstairs because it was starting to ring in the back of my head.
Yes.
It was just constant. It was like.
Marksman? No, no. Something even more innocuous.
Well, thank you. Moving on to board reports and school liaison reports. I know some meetings are going on tonight, some haven't happened yet. Thursday night is the central PTSA meeting, 6:30 at Spry. And I believe Schrader's is later in the month, so I'm not sure if anyone has any updates yet, if it's still a little early for some of the buildings.
I did go to Clem South yesterday.
Sure.
It's a little like it's their first meeting, but, so they like to do a thing where we basically have the principal talk a little bit. So first of all, it was a great start to the new year. Kids are all happy to be back, very similar energy to the pre-pandemic time period. She didn't want to say normal, so we're going to say pre-pandemic.
Okay.
Bringing back grade level assemblies, definitely to help continue developing a lot of that, you know, the Clem South community, doing a lot of the care stuff. In terms of the PTSA themselves, they held two kindergarten playdates, there was supposed to be three, but one got rained out. It was great to see families bonding, the community coming back together. Every single kindergartner will have a T-shirt, so those are going to be coming in the next couple of weeks. And I'm so excited because that means my little guy gets one next year. They also held the teacher appreciation breakfast, which was kind of like a last minute plan to kind of just welcome teachers back and it was, it was beautiful. I wasn't part of it this year because I had to step down from my role this year, but it was wonderful and the teachers were so grateful. But it was wonderful and the teachers were so grateful. So it was nice to hear that they had such a great time doing that. Some upcoming events, they have their welcome back fun run, which I think this is our third or fourth year doing that. It's this Saturday. Their kids are going to be navigating obstacle courses behind the school and our favorite, the snowy truck will be there. So we may not be able to be there on time, but we're still going to grab some snowy ice. Already planning for our trunk or treat in, in October 21st. They're of course doing the Leo's Pie fundraiser and starting actually in the next week and a half, going through November. They're thinking about maybe doing a chili cook-off. So looking at the, how that might work out, maybe looking at local businesses that do chili or families that do chili, looking at, you know, what's allowed and what's not. And then they're looking, most importantly, for different ways to bring in families in terms of like topics of interest for, so guest speakers. We talked about guest speakers, about, you know, social emotional learning or online safety or even basic things like EpiPen training, just anything that families feel like they're lacking. They'd like to know more about kind of what, what people want to hear and learn about as parents to then go back and help our kids in our houses. So there's a lot on the, the docket for this year. I'm really looking forward to the P T S A.
And I'm sure we'll have more once meeting, more meetings get underway at our next meeting.
Yeah, State Road is done as well, so I'll have to talk to them.
Okay. Moving on to Monroe County School Boards, legislative, right?
Yep, we opened that one up.
Okay.
Give me a second.
I know, I'm sorry.
So that meeting was pretty lengthy because there is some new leadership. So our meeting was on Wednesday, Wednesday, the 7th. Just a couple of starting out reminders that there's going to be an Area Two meeting on October 1st. The M C S B A Law Conference is on the 22nd at the Country Club of Rochester. And then our annual legislative breakfast will be on the 4th. There's also a survey just came out to kind of see where we are in terms of what issues our, our district is finding to be most prevalent. And that'll be, I was sending that, sending that to you, Janice and Linda, to kind of get a feel for the M C S B A, kind of where we really want to put our focus in terms of priorities. Some of the activities that they are thinking about doing, looking at, looking at the Monroe County position papers in terms of like our talking points and really looking at advocating what specifically we need to look at with the elected representatives and really kind of cleaning up where we stand and then kind of reprioritizing post-COVID. Let's see. They greatly appreciate the superintendents in all of the districts for being part of the activities. Really looking at district and regional priorities. Legislators are showing an improved desire to hold virtual meetings so that more of them can be present when there's meetings. But there's also a huge push to make sure we get it back to in-person as much as possible. It's harder for a person to walk away when they're right in front of you. Let's see. Just really looking at what was lost, what was gained, learning, basically trying to learn from the pandemic and how to make communication better in terms of advocating for our district's needs. So just some general thoughts and comments, keeping both virtual and in-person as an option. It's always best to look people in the eye. The, the biggest issue seems to be coming up is the, the electric buses and the concerns surrounding that. I mean, mix that with bus driver shortages and trying to push for, you know, changes in laws in terms of bus, bus driver requirements. And now you're telling us they have to be electric buses. So they're actually thinking about coming up with some kind of collaborative work system to kind of work through some of that and see what it looks like and maybe try to work back on pushing some of those expectations back or, you know, really making it realistic for our districts that just can't do it. And of course, there was no money behind it yet either. So tucking it, if he wants to do it, where's the money for it? Let's see. Some other issues, it's pretty, it was pretty long, like I mentioned. So they're really starting to refocus on state assessment data. One big, the other big thing too is looking at how much are we testing our kids, how much are we actually using and how much of it is unnecessary. So really trying to work with state to just prioritize where we need the data and make it to where using it as much as possible for the right reasons to help fill some of those gaps and to keep kids moving forward. Working on improving community safety, especially with mental health related issues in schools. Like I mentioned, changing some of those under the hood requirements for bus drivers to make it more, more streamlined that for the skills that bus drivers actually need to have, rather than knowing how every single piece of the, the bus works. Let's see. Priorities for 2023 so far are looking at funding for U P K and reinstating free lunches for all students. So many districts are saying this was one of the best decisions we had going and now they're not great, happy with it being gone.
I hope that that's definitely, I really think that's a big, that should be a big priority.
I mean, that and then the electric buses were the top two. Also making sure that the, not just being happy that we have our foundation aid, but actually looking at how can we change that formula to make sense in society today. Some, so somebody suggested looking at B O Cs and looking at how we can bring the retired teachers, retired aides, retired people back into the system by lifting those restrictions on retirement caps, maybe giving them more time to work. And also looking at those options for fire and police as well, finding ways to expand, to expand that limit on retirement so they will only come back to work. No more mandates without funding. Mental health funding should be separate from foundation aid. Possibly looking at exemptions in terms of like the veterans exemptions, the state should be helping to fund some of those to make sure that we're not putting the tax burden on our, our community when we're trying to do something good for our community. So trying to make that, that shift of tax responsibility a little bit less impactful on the everyday homeowner. Continuing concerns regarding teacher certification, trying to simplify and speed that up, especially with out of state people who might want to come here. Concerns regarding the digital divide where families still don't have equitable access to technology. Continuing issues with special education needs, general staffing concerns. And then looking at, look, the tax cap regulations and how that is set up and if that needs to be changed as well. So a lot of these are the things we have, we've seen before, but definitely focusing on that U P K, the free lunches and the equity piece. And of course, the, as the laws and rules change, looking at, one of the big new things was respecting students and women and teachers' rights in terms of privacy, in terms of pregnancy and those kinds of things because of the different debates going on nationwide as well. So looking at some of those personal health concerns as well and how are we going to deal with those as school districts? I know it's a lot, but.
No, thank you. I don't know if labor relations has.
I think that's.
Not yet. No, information is tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. And executive isn't until October 5th, so. But before I forget, I think I caught it on your computer, the, we were talking about P T S A, the Max Dossel. Thank you. I knew there was something else, but before I, so I don't forget it later. On October 4th, it's a former insider talks on social media and your kids and it's going to be a trader. I don't know if I have the time on here, 7 o'clock. Would be a good event.
Yep. He's working with the students as well.
Perfect. And he's working with the students. That's awesome.
At the secondary level.
At the secondary.
Four secondary.
Okay. I didn't want to forget that after we moved on from P T S A, so thank you.
So it's actually, we wanted him to come. I think he was due to come on like the 20th of March in 2020. And you all know what happened on March 13th, one week earlier. So it's exciting to finally have him coming back.
He's amazing.
Yeah.
Awesome. So that's October 4th. Moving on to standing district committees, I don't know if audit has met.
No, we're setting that up. Our audit should be done in the next week. And so we'll get that on our auditor's calendar.
Awesome. Policy is meeting on September 22nd in hopes that in October, we can start our first reads of our new document. Budget advisory, we rotate. And I'm not sure we scheduled strategic planning either.
We have not.
Right? Okay.
But I know Larry has met with Colleen. And did you meet with them too? I know he met with Colleen to say, hey, this is, we need to get, because that's the subcommittee work from the.
Yes.
That we had this year too. So we'll get a date on the calendar. Cindy?
Sounds good. And then I'm not sure if we have when or fire updates.
Not yet. Nope. When has been meeting all summer, the Max Dossels.
Is that part?
Is part of their partnering with that and their meeting, their community meeting is next week at noon at E P S.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And I know Fire is looking forward to really working hand in hand with our new director of family engagement and inclusivity. And I think that's going to kind of be their, their connection moving forward once that gets established. So.
Awesome. All right. Awesome. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Everyone's had a chance to read through everything. This is just where we kind of all approve it all together in one motion. So if everyone is all good with that, I can, can I have a motion to approve all the items in the consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent?
So moved.
Jen, so moved. Second Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That moves us into public speaking, right? This is, sorry, this is part of. Moving into the public speaking time, as always, we're going to try to adhere to our four minutes. The board is here to listen. We plan on following up as necessary. So we welcome anyone who has signed up to speak. Can we hear?
Yeah, there you go.
Oh.
David Ruiz and Jennifer Fonseca.
All right. Before we adjourn, just a couple of updates for the next meeting. So we're meeting again Tuesday, September 27th. That is a Board of Education workshop. We're going to be focusing on Parent Square and Communication. So any parents who have been getting those Parent Square updates, I'm looking forward to it. It does seem to streamline it all in the app, which I like. But we're getting, we're getting the hang of it. The kids and I are getting the hang of it. So that'll be a good update. I look forward to that workshop. It is a lot, but I do see the, the value in, yes. Yep. I agree. Right, 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 right.
Which means I know my husband doesn't know where. Clem's South families that were confused about it come to our workshop on that day.
There you go. So that's, so yeah, so that's why I'm throwing that out there. Our next regular business meeting is October 11th. I believe the plan is still to stay here. Not sure if anyone has anything else to add. It was a great opening. I mean, I can't close out the first meeting without just thanking everyone who was involved in every single aspect. I know it's tough and it was a lot of work going into it, but.
It was such a team effort.
Yeah. It was awesome.
I'm really excited about the themes. This was the first time I got to be part of it. So I loved seeing everyone. I love that you incorporated students and from such different facets. I, I was, I loved the staff chorus.
That was great.
I thought that was great. I mean, you know, when you talk about together, I really feel like that's what, what your, everybody's soul needs right now after being separated for so long.
Yep.
And so I'm so happy to see that as a theme and I'm really excited to see you demonstrate it by including everyone together, Brian. I think that's fantastic.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Again, like I said, it is such a team effort.
Yes.
Turn on the room here and everybody looking back.
How many people it takes to pull everyone together.
So it is.
Awesome. All right.
Great start.
That, can I have a motion to adjourn? Jen, so moved. Second Linda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was great.
Good evening, everyone.